Good afternoon, the July 25th, 2022 council briefing meeting will come to order. The time is two o'clock. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Nelson?
Present.
Councilmember Peterson?
Present.
Councilmember Sawant?
Present.
Councilmember Strauss?
Present.
Member Hobald?
Here.
Councilmember Lewis?
Present.
And Council President Juarez?
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you. We'll move on to approval of the minutes. If there's objections, the minutes of July 11th and July 18th will be adopted. Hearing and seeing no objections, the minutes are indeed adopted. Moving on to the president's report on today's agenda, we have no proclamations, letters, or presentations, but we will have two executive sessions, and I will read that, those instructions at the end of, or at the end of this presentation. On tomorrow's agenda, the consent calendar will include the minutes and the payment of the bills as well as five appointments recommended by the Sustainability and Renters Rights Committee. We'll take one vote on all items on the consent calendar unless any council member requests that an item be removed for consideration separately. If so, that item will be taken up at the end of the agenda. Following the consent calendar, there will be seven items, including two items which were referred directly to full council and five items recommended by two committees. Two items of two full council include Council Bill 120372, which repeals the ordinance establishing hazard pay during the height of the pandemic. If you need any information or additional information on this ordinance before tomorrow's meeting, Karina Bull on Central Staff is prepared to answer questions. The second item is Council Bill 120375 sponsored by Councilmember Sawant, which establishes abortion sanctuary status for the city of Seattle. I believe Councilperson Sawant is planning to propose an amendment tomorrow, which she should have received. Anne Gorman on Central Staff is available to answer any questions regarding the amendment or any other amendment as well. We'll also be considering the recommendation of the Sustainability and Renters Rights Committee to confirm Justin Farrell to head the Office of Sustainability and Environment. And finally, finally, the Finance and Housing Committee has four items it has recommended to full council, which we will consider tomorrow as well. Information on all these items is available on the online agenda. Moving on to signing of letters and proclamations, we have no letters or proclamations for signature today. Moving on to preview of council actions, council, council and regional committees. This week's role call rotation begins with Councilmember Nelson, and after that, it will be Councilmember Peterson, Sawant, Strauss, Herbl, Lewis, and then myself. With that, Councilmember Nelson, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. Hello, everyone. There is nothing from the Economic Development, Technology and City Light Committee on tomorrow's agenda. However, we do have our, our meeting on Wednesday, and there are four items on the agenda. The first is a discussion and possible vote on the appointment of Markham McIntyre as Director of the Office of Economic Development. And council members were invited to submit questions, and Mr. McIntyre's answers will be attached to the agenda later today or by 9:30, which is the drop dead deadline tomorrow. Next will be a discussion and possible vote on Council Bill 120378 authorizing City Light to execute an operations and maintenance agreement and telecommunications agreement with Snohomish County PUD. Item three is a briefing, public hearing and discussion of Resolution 32061, which would approve City Light's 2022 Integrated Resource Plan and the Integrated Resource Plan for the biennium September 20, 2022 through August 2024. And that's in compliance with RCW 19280 and is conforming to the Washington Energy Independence Act and the Washington Clean Energy Act. So state statute also requires a public hearing, so that will occur after the briefing and before this, the discussion. There will be a possible vote at our following meeting on August 10th and a full council vote hopefully on August 15th. And then the last item on our agenda is our second discussion and possible vote on Council Bill 120379 relating to regulations of food delivery platforms sponsored by Councilmember Peterson and Councilmember Strauss. So for external committee meetings last week, I'll just mention a couple. On Monday, we had a briefing from Elsa Brown on the mayor's office and the Puget Sound Regional Council and Economic Development in the central Puget Sound region. I am on that committee. However, those meetings occur at the same time as, as my county committee meetings as well as finance and housing. So it's difficult for me to attend those, but I got a briefing. And other meetings spanned the range of topics from the poor state of Eighth Avenue South in Georgetown, a meeting about Seattle City Light easements in Snohomish. Or I mean Shoreline, representatives of food delivery platforms to discuss this upcoming legislation, meeting with senior deputy mayor and CBO director to discuss upcoming budget negotiations and their priorities and mine. And, and then I ended the week at my first Ballard FC game. And I have to say that I, I know there is number one Ballard FC fan giving a little air pump there. And I, I learned a lot about the importance of this team to the community. And I will let Councilmember Strauss talk about their recent wins after that. So one thing I did want to highlight or mention or flag is that we've been receiving emails from constituents extremely worried about monkeypox and wondering what the city is doing and what the county is doing. And these are news stories that are more and more common. And I, I have to say that we have engaged Seattle King County Public Health to, to find out what is currently happening on this front in terms of public education, a plan for distribution of medication. You know, the list goes on. Just kind of think in your mind, everything that we had to do kind of at the last minute with COVID. So I have provided some of that information to the folks that have been writing our, into our office. I am an alternate on the board of Seattle King County Public Health, so I have not been at those meetings. I, I plan to talk to colleagues about, you know, about what's going on behind the scenes to plan for this. We don't want to make mistakes that we've made in the past by waiting too long. And so I, more to come on that. I just want to acknowledge that, that we have to get ahead of this. And I will stop there. Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Nope. All right. I can do my alphabet. I will pass it now to Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, colleagues. On tomorrow afternoon's full city council agenda, there are no items from our committee on transportation and Seattle Public Utilities. Our next committee on transportation and Seattle Public Utilities is scheduled for next Tuesday, August 2nd at 9:30 AM. We have tentatively scheduled a few items. We'll have a second discussion and possible vote on SDOT's proposed bill 120364. As we heard a committee last week, the bill would add a new section to the traffic code establishing authority to designate parking for truck tractors in the public right of way and would amend another section of the Seattle Municipal Code to allow for enforcement of that designated truck parking. While SDOT's presentation was clear about four locations where it would initially designate temporary truck parking, including Harbor Island, Georgetown, and Soto, the legislation as transmitted would provide blanket authority to SDOT throughout the city. So to address concerns expressed by the general public about that authority, I'm putting forward an amendment to SDOT's bill to have the director's role so that the department can specify the principles that we'll use for designating future truck parking as well as its process for future public engagement. Our committee will also vote on Council Bill 120373, which would enable Seattle Public Utilities to accept easements for installation, operation, and maintenance of hydrants, water mains, domestic meter faults, fire service meters, and other equipment necessary for water utility purposes at various locations in Seattle. Our committee will also vote on several appointments to the customer review panel for Seattle Public Utilities. Again, want to thank Councilmember Nelson for making room in her Economic Development Committee this week to vote on the bill that I'm co-sponsoring with Councilmember Strauss to make permanent the 15% cap on fees that delivery corporations charge to Seattle restaurants. If you have any questions about that, please contact Karina Bull on Central Staff. In District Four last week, I attended a meeting of the University District Partnership, which is the nonprofit program manager of the Business Improvement Area that strives to make the U District neighborhood clean, safe, and welcoming. And we discussed public safety, homelessness, transportation, the budget, and affordable housing. And I assured them that I support Mayor Harold's new recruitment plan for SPD officers and detectives. And I look forward to quickly passing that legislation. I also attended the Wallingford Farmer's Market, and that Farmer's Market is open every Wednesday, 5:00 to 8:00 PM through September 28th. And yes, I did get my strawberries and cream popsicle in case you're wondering. That concludes my report. Any questions before we hear from Councilmember Sawant? Okay, thank you. That's very smart.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson, and good afternoon, everybody. There are six items on tomorrow's city council agenda from the Sustainability and Renters Rights Committee. There are five reappointments to the Green New Deal Oversight Board of the Consent Calendar. And the confirmation of Jessen Farrell as Director of the Office of Sustainability and Environment is on the regular portion of city council agenda. The committee unanimously voted to recommend confirmation of these appointments. Also on tomorrow's city council agenda is the legislation from my office as Council President Juarez mentioned, to make Seattle sanctuary for women and pregnant people and their doctors and other care providers facing persecution for seeking or performing abortions in states with, as we know, many states with barbaric anti-abortion laws now after the Supreme Court ruling. Laws violating basic bodily autonomy and criminalizing reproductive healthcare are fundamentally unjust, and we cannot allow Seattle to be complicit. City Council Central Staff have drafted legislation to prevent Seattle police, you know, for, for legislation from my office to prevent Seattle police from arresting people, either patients or providers for outstanding warrants or otherwise aiding in investigations related to anti-abortion laws in other states. There are currently state laws, as mentioned before in briefings, such as House Bill 1851 and legal opinions to protect people who perform or have an abortion in Seattle, including if a pregnant person lives in another state and comes to Seattle for an abortion because their state bans them. However, those laws do nothing to prevent people, sorry, protect people to perform or have an abortion in a state where they have been banned, which basically means for them to perform that abortion, it would require breaking those deeply unjust laws. And that is what this legislation from my office will address. If people break those unjust anti-abortion laws in their own state to provide this essential healthcare and believe that they will be caught, then they can come to Seattle and stay off prosecution. As I cautioned at the press conference when I announced this legislation, this will unfortunately not make the arrest warrant go away. That would require building the women's rights and LGBTQ rights movement strong enough to win back the right to bodily autonomy nationwide. But it will mean that people with unjust arrest warrants can live in Seattle without those warrants ever being processed. After the press conference, we know Governor Inslee issued an executive order and Mayor, Mayor Harold pledged at a press conference to temporarily instruct state and city police not to aid the, in those out of state abortion-related investigations. This is important. However, those executive orders are significantly weaker than this legislation because they no make no mention of out of state arrest warrants. There are also no substitute for actually codifying those protections into law, which our legislation will do. The overturning of Roe shows the importance of codifying human rights into law. My office has also prepared an amendment, as was mentioned before, to send to all council offices last Friday that makes some small technical edits and removes a line in order to make the bill better reflect its original intent. The line deleted had said, quote, "provided by a licensed healthcare provider operating within the scope of their practice," end quote, while, when describing the abortion-related arrest warrants and investigations that Seattle police will not aid in. The reality is states that have passed draconian anti-abortion laws also make it impossible to be licensed to provide reproductive healthcare. And as a result, people find other that would effectively would be illegal ways to do the same thing. So by limiting it to licensed healthcare providers operating within the scope of their practice, the original version would have undercut the impact of the bill. So this amendment corrects that inadvertent sort of wording that existed before. As I said, this would, this amendment would align the bill language to its original intent and is consistent with how I have been publicly describing the bill. I urge all council members to vote yes on this legislation, including the clarifying amendment A that I just described. That is the report from my office and committee. Do council members have any other, any questions before I end this report? Seeing none, I will pass it on to Councilmember Strauss, who is next in the rotation. Thank you.
There we go. How are you, colleagues? Great to see you all. Good afternoon. The District Six District Report, we're having a town hall this coming Thursday, July 28th. We have changed the time in accordance with the heat advisory. We're going to be meeting at 6:00 PM. We're going to be in person at the Greenwood, Green Lake Park Aqua Theater. They used to do synchronized swimming. They used to have bands performing here. It is now just the Aqua Theater. So we'll be hosting our District Six Town Hall from there. If the heat advisory does get worse, we are going to move to an air-conditioned room at the Greenwood Library. I just want to focus this point to say, we're dealing with two different types of crisis here. One is a pandemic where we don't want to be inside with others necessarily, and the other is with extreme heat. And so we're trying to balance these needs well. If you RSVP for the town hall, we'll be able to send you up-to-date information as we are getting closer. I've heard from many in District Six, and I too have desired to connect in person. And so this town hall will be your chance to ask and have your questions answered. Again, we're going to be holding it at the Aqua Theater at Green Lake. And if the heat gets too bad, we're going to transfer to the Greenwood Library. Just as the typical pandemic caveat, if a member of my team or I test positive in the days prior to the event, the town hall will either become virtual or canceled. So again, please RSVP on my website, and we'll be sending out another newsletter today with that RSVP link. Last week in District Six, on Thursday, I hosted my weekly office hours with D6 residents. I also scheduled some hours outside of the regular time to offset the cancellations we had to make accommodations for council meetings and sound transit decisions. During last week's office hours, I met with D6 residents, one from Finney Ridge, four from Ballard, one from East Ballard, one from Whittier Heights, two from the industrial district, and one from Loyal Heights. We discussed homelessness, public safety in RVs, tiny home villages, bike safety, pedestrian improvements to Market Street, no parking signs, the future of light rail station placement, and utility poles being stored outside the Loyal Heights Community Center. I want to thank D6 resident Jim who alerted us to City Light repeatedly storing power poles at Loyal Heights Community Center. It's one thing if it happens once. This is the third summer in a row it's, it's occurred. City Light responded quickly to get the poles removed as fast as possible, and they will no longer be storing them at the community center. I just want to highlight that this is the power of requesting district office hours and working with my D6 District Director, Amy Inbisk. As you D6 residents are the first to know about what's happening on your block. When you let us know, we can advocate you for you and get you the solutions for everyone in D6. So I just want to thank you, Jim, for bringing that to our attention. Thank you to City Light for taking quick action. I did also have a project check-in last week with SDOT regarding Ballard Avenue. As you may have heard, SDOT will be implementing the short-term improvements to Ballard Avenue that we've been working on all year. These improvements are updating the striping on Ballard Ave to reflect the one-way northbound street. New striping and painted areas will make these changes clear. Adding interim curb bulbs with paint flexible posts and planters to open up intersections and to make sure that folks aren't speeding. We're going to be converting the intersections at Ballard Ave and 22nd and Vernon Place to always stops. We're going to be putting, we're going to fix this tree pits with firm and level walking surfaces so that the tree pits can be watered, and they're not a tripping hazard. We're going to be delineating parking spaces on Ballard Ave, clarifying curbside loading locations and times of day for loading based on ongoing conversations with local businesses. And so for this week, you'll see SDOT repairing bricks on Ballard Avenue, getting ready for the flexible posts. There may be some temporary closures at times. We'll be putting out no parking and no stopping signs along Ballard Avenue to begin making the space for crews to work. And next week, you'll see us install, you'll see SDOT install new signs, planters, and flexible posts. This is all part of my pathway to permanency for outdoor dining. We've been using Ballard Avenue as the model for citywide policy. And I'm just very excited that once this is done and the community has time to experience it, we're going to hold another design threat focused on the intersection of 20th Avenue and Ballard Avenue to understand what has worked well and what needs to be improved with the short-term improvements and the structural and aesthetic integrity of pergolas that is needed for moving forward. Separately, I met with the Ballard Historical Society about revamping and revitalizing the Customer Service Center to make this a more welcoming space. This is part of my work with the 22nd Avenue Work Group. Through this work, I'm reaching out to other city departments to see if they too would like to use space at the CSC. The outcome I'm driving towards is that the CSC, the Customer Service Center, is a hub for our community and our city government so that you don't have to go out of your way to get what you need from, from the city. I also last week met with a resident leading our work to do placemaking in the Prairie District. Placemaking again is a collaborative effort to use paint, plants, and signage in public space to build upon the entrepreneurial work of the Ballard Brew Coalition. The long vision of this is to have safe places to walk, roll, reduce traffic collisions, and increase the vibrancy of the space and to connect Fremont and Ballard to the Brewery District to make them all the stronger. Congratulations or condolences, Councilmember Herbl. I don't know which one to give you. This month marks the 115th anniversary of West Seattle being annexed. I too feel that pain in Ballard or levity in Ballard, whichever you may. This was also the 115th anniversary of Ballard. Yet, we seem to be, Ballard seems to be expanding out of its territory to Interbay where Ballard FC plays at Interbay Stadium. I was happy to attend the Ballard FC playoffs on Friday. Congratulations to their second victory on Sunday as well. They won the semifinals on Sunday in overtime with a bicycle kick goal to take them to the Western Conference Finals. Friends, this is their inaugural season, and they are winning. It is just so much fun to see the players. The tickets are 15 bucks. You're close enough to the action. You can see their footwork. It's just a really great community experience. Anyone who can get out there for next season, I highly recommend it. And lastly, I continue to host my regular operations meetings with members of the community to move action plans forward at the Leary Triangle to address homelessness in the industrial area, to implement the 22nd Avenue Plan in downtown Ballard, and the case conferencing meetings for people who are high impact in our neighborhood. This coming week in District Six, I'll be receiving a Green Lake Outer Loop update to ensure the work SDOT implements fixes past mistakes, creates safe crossings of Winona Avenue, and minimizes externalities while creating the barrier between the highway and Green Lake, the most heavily used park in our city. I'll also be speaking at the Dockside Apartments Open House, opening over 70 units of affordable housing in Green Lake. If you'd like more information or to join, I know Lehigh is welcoming everyone to attend. And if you're interested in volunteering, I know there's going to be volunteer days in the near future helping to build furniture and other tasks needed before the building welcomes residents. As you may know, this is also the location where Spud's Fish and Chips is. Spud's is staying put, and while I'm where some permitting hurdles, we're working with them to get their delicious restaurant open as fast as possible. This week, I will also be meeting to discuss the Leary Triangle Activation Team, which is underway. We are currently needing to re-soil, seed, and bark some of the space as well as add water, add a water meter to help facilitate the next steps of activation. I'll be meeting with members of the Ballard and Fremont communities to discuss Route 40 with King County Councilmember Jeanne Cole Wells, SDOT and Metro all together to understand the needs, impacts, and local input regarding the upcoming Route 40 improvements. My District Director, D6 District Director, Amy Inbisk, is going to be attending the Green Lake Chamber of Commerce. And as part of my 22nd Avenue Work Group, which is completing the necessary work to reopen Ballard Commons, I'll be meeting with stakeholders individually this week to hasten the paces. There's a fair amount of work to get done in short order. Last week at City Hall, I met with Senior Deputy Mayor Monisha Harold, Deputy Mayor Tiffany Washington, and Budget Director Julie Dingly regarding my 2023-24 budget priorities. I attended the Association of Washington Cities Legislative Priorities Meeting. I attended the Metropolitan Parks District meeting last week as well as this morning. This morning, I discussed some of the initial improvements D6 residents have sent me. If you have a program or improvement you want to see in your park that you'd like to see funded, please do email me and my District Six District Director, Amy Inbisk. This week in City Hall, I'll be meeting with Chief Diaz for a regular check-in. On Tuesday, I'll be attending the SPD Chief Police Chief Search Committee Conversation at North Seattle College. The 90-minute conversation will be there, a presentation about policing and best practices, followed by question and answers, period. On Wednesday, the legislation capping food and beverage delivery fees, Councilmember Peterson and I co-sponsored, and I co-sponsored is being heard again in Economic Development and City Light Committee. Thank you to Councilmember Peterson for allowing me to join you on this important work. And thank you to Councilmember Nelson for hearing this bill in your committee quickly. Also, thank you to Karina Bull for all your excellent staffing. This week, I'll also be meeting with Mayor Harold to discuss a number of different priorities and issues. Seven months into Mayor Harold's administration, we felt his vision in, in action for our city. I really appreciate his focus on getting things done quickly. What long-term improvements need time to fix and focusing on solutions we can deliver. I'll also be attending the Growth Management Planning Council meeting to hear about affordable housing activities and review the draft urban growth area expansion policies. Lastly, colleagues, Land Use Committee, the next Land Use Committee will be this Wednesday, July 27th. There's one item on the agenda, which is the Comprehensive Plan Docketing. For those unfamiliar with the docketing, docketing is a public participation procedure required by the Growth Management Act that allows citizens to, the opportunity to request amendments to a jurisdiction's comp plan. After these proposed changes are identified, the planning commission and then the city council review and confirm the list of amendments known as the docket to be considered over the course of the year. The purpose of establishing the docket is to coordinate proposed changes and to help the community track progress. On the IRC for Land Use Committee, there's an appointment of one Rico Kurandongo is the Director of Planning and Community Development. Colleagues, my office will be sending the first round of questions. We'll be, and we ask you, if you have any questions you would like Director Kurandongo to answer, to please add them in. I will be the first to say he had really big shoes to fill stepping in this role, and I think that he's filling them very well. So I'm excited for this process. Council President, colleagues, that is my report. Do you have any questions? Seeing no questions, I think I barely made it under 10 minutes. Councilmember Herbl, I'll pass it off to you.
Thank you so much. So see, let's, starting up, I have no items from the Public Safety and Human Services Committee on the full council agenda tomorrow. I do have an amendment to an item that was voted on in committee last week. It was a committee that I was unable to attend, the Finance and Housing Committee, and the amendment is through Council Bill 120366. The amendment is, that, that, that particular bill is the, the budget adjustment legislation. And the amendment itself was requested by the executive because it was inadvertently left out of the supplemental budget when it was transmitted. The impact of the amendment is to revise the proviso that the council placed on the city attorney's budget for pre-filing diversion in the 2022 adopted budget. In last year's budget, we placed proviso on about $1.1 million for pre-filing diversion. Council Bill 120366, the bill in question, transfers $200,000 from the city attorney to the Human Services Department for pre-filing diversion contracts. We happily, I'm glad to say, we anticipate seeing all pre-filing diversion dollars in HSD's budget moving forward. Tom Mike will email this amendment out to council members on Friday. The Public Safety and Human Services Committee meeting is happening tomorrow morning at 9:30 AM. The agenda includes follow-up presentations on gun violence with preventers, presenters from the Regional Domestic Violence Firearms Unit, the Harborview Medical Center Hospital Bed Intervention Program, Community Passageways, and Public Health Seattle King County. This is much like the King County Council is doing. We are having a series of presentations on the work that King County Public Health is doing with contribution from the city of Seattle's funds. We had a sort of overview at our last committee briefing, and now we're going to have a more in-depth, sort of in-the-weeds discussion about some of the programs tomorrow morning. We're also going to be receiving an abortion access briefing from Public Health Seattle King County. And finally, we are going to hear the required, our accountability legislation requires these reports be provided and heard in. our accountability legislation, um, requires these reports be provided and, um, heard in the Public Safety Committee. The twenty twenty-two mid-year accountability report from the Community Police Commission, the Office of the Inspector General, and the Office of Police Accountability. Because I know, um, there's great interest in the timing on, uh, Mayor Harold's police incentive bill. Just wanna, um, be transparent and share folks, um, what the, what the schedule is moving forward. I know there was a press conference announcing the bill back on tw- uh, July thirteenth. Um, there's release from our council president urging action on Tuesday, July nineteenth. I received the bill on Wednesday, July twentieth. Um, council staff is reviewing the bill. Has questions into the executive and we intend to have it on the August second Introduction Referral Committee. For those of you wondering, um, about why it's not on tomorrow, uh, I think I gave a little bit of an overview of, of of, of why that is, but I want to explain how, um, having it on the second versus the twenty-six really makes no difference. Our Public Safety Human Services Committee meeting is in the morning tomorrow, and the IRC vote is in the afternoon tomorrow. So the soonest we could hear it, even if it had been able to be referred tomorrow, is on, um, the ninth. So again, IRC on the second, committee on the ninth. This information has been conveyed to the mayor's office and they understand that because of the timing, that there's little difference in an IRC vote tomorrow versus next Tuesday. Thank you. Sum up, police officer recruitment incentives bill is planned for the August ninth committee meeting, and the schedule is, uh, designed to dovetail with the previously scheduled uh, quarterly update on the budget overtime staffing and response times quarterly report. Moving forward, um, really excited to hear, um, that folks, uh, from the council are planning on attending some of the mayor's office, uh, community conversations, um, as part of the Police Chief Committee, leading up to the mayor's appointment of a permanent police chief. There's a series of those meetings, um, happening. The forums will be moderated by, uh, Ben McBride from Empower Institute. Um, this is an organization that has worked with hundred law enforcement executives and agencies. The goal for the conversations to create space for community members to elevate their perspectives and experiences, inform the search process, and future efforts to ensure public safety for all communities. Although some of the meetings, if you look at the schedule, have a specific community focus or specific demographic focus uh, for who they're, uh, working to engage with. I want to just make clear that all of the meetings are welcome to all folks to attend. The first is tonight at Mount Calvary Church with a community focus on faith communities. Um, and, um, folks in the Central District and South Seattle. Tomorrow, there'll be a virtual meeting, uh, with small and local business focus and a general public focus meeting at North Seattle College. And then on the thirtieth, on Saturday, there'll be a meeting with a youth, youth focus at Rainier Beach Community College and a virtual meeting with an immigrant and refugee focus. Uh, more information can be found at Seattle dot com forward slash mayor forward slash one dash Seattle dash initiatives forward slash chief search. Meeting this week, uh, my twice monthly meeting with, with Chief Diaz, uh, I think that's coming up tomorrow. Um, and last week, uh, was really, uh, pleased to participate in, I think, the third meeting of the Chief of Police Search Committee. Uh, and also, um, had my regular meeting with the interim OPA Director. Just a few public health updates. Um, I did, um, hear Councilmember Nelson make a request for some information on the Public Health Department's efforts around monkeypox, um, at last week's public health, uh, public health meeting. Uh, Director, interim Director, um, actually, no, it was interim, it was, uh, Dr. Dushan, um, gave, um, a staff report, um, that included an update on the county's efforts um, on, um, addressing monkeypox transmission. I will, um, work to find that in my inbox and share it, but one thing I, I can tell you that as of this morning, there are eighty-four cases. The national supply of vaccine for monkeypox is limited. We do have, uh, King County does have our initial allocation of one thousand four hundred and twenty doses, and Public Health is working with providers to distribute those doses. Again, eighty-four cases so far. And, um, fourteen hundred doses, uh, for folks who have not been infected. Um, we're, we are expecting more vaccines into the summer and fall. Um, the CDC is setting the criteria, uh, working with Washington State Department of Health, um, on how much vaccine state gets and, and, and where it's distributed across the state. A little bit on, um, severe heat. We know, um, we are going to experience, um, some severe heat events this week with highs in the nineties. Uh, most Seattle households don't have air conditioning at home, so it's really important to take precautions. Uh, remember to stay hy- hydrated, drink lots of water. So drink lots of water before you feel thirsty. Close your blinds and curtains, cover up your windows, use fans. And keep in your neighbors, particularly if you have neighbors that are seniors and folks who have other, uh, vulnerable conditions. And don't leave, um, your pets outside or your children alone in vehicles. Um, four places that you can go to if it gets too hot at home. There are four community centers that have AC and will be open from two to six, I'm sorry, two to eight this week. Rainier Beach, International District, Chinatown, Northgate, and Magnuson Park. The Central Library and seventeen branches have, uh, air conditioning. You can check the closest one in their opening hours at spl.org forward slash today. Also, five senior centers will be open for cooling with air conditioning. Please call ahead for hours, um, but the list of the centers as we know them right now, the Central Area Senior Center, Greenwood, Pike Market, Southeast Seattle, and the Senior Center of West Seattle. And then, um, lastly, really important to note that King County, uh, Regional Homelessness Authority is opening additional indoor daytime cooling spaces starting tomorrow for people experiencing homelessness. You can find them at King County, uh, sorry, I should say, kcrha.org and search for severe weather updates. Um, let's see, wanna also highlight some, some good news, um, in District One. I think many of you have heard me talk about the fact that, uh, the South Park Community Center um, has been, has been closed and it didn't reopen when other community centers, um, reopened after, um, COVID transmissions were down, um, and didn't reopen due to long planned stabilization and redevelopment work um, at the South Park Community Center. Um, but that work has been delayed and now isn't expected to happen until the end of the year. Multiple community members, as well as, um, the Southwest Precinct Captain, have been raising the alarm about, um, the fact that there is a closed building with, um, no renovation happening and an increase in gang activity in South Park this summer, including a fourteen-year-old who was recently a victim of gang violence. So they've been contacting my office, using social media to call for the community center to reopen so that young people in South Park have a place to be this summer. Um, South Park is a pretty isolated from other community centers, um, part of town, and it also has the highest concentration of kids of any Seattle neighborhood. Um, uniquely lacking in green space and community space. And, um, last week, um, you know, we squeaky wheel gets the grease sometimes, um, we've been lifting up the voices of community, um, first with parks and then with the mayor's office and advocating that the community center be reopened. And I learned last week that South Park residents can once again use their community centers. I just wanted to share that bit of good news. As far as regional committees coming up this week, I have on Thursday, the Regional Law, Safety, and Justice Committee. Um, and then also on Thursday, the, uh, Leadership Link, the Leadership Intervention and Change Programs String Committee meeting, um, that, uh, I represent the city on. And, um, also want to, um, highlight, um, office hours this week. I'm having office hours in district in person this Friday between three and seven PM at the Southwest Customer Service Center. And, um, another big event coming up this week, um, is on Wednesday. The, I'm, I'm co-hosting with King County Regional Homelessness Authority, the District One Homelessness Response Workshop. Um, they're working in different districts. Many of you have, probably have already been doing outreach with them, um, to identify the providers in each district to, um, to have planning workshop with them. Happy to, um, to help plan and participate in that coming up. And then finally, on Thursday, I will be attending the West Seattle Transportation Coalition meeting. All I've got. Anybody have any questions or comments? Not seeing any. I'll pass it on to Councilmember Lewis. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Herbold, and, and thank you so much for highlighting the, um, uh, Cooling Center Access. I, I will rest on your remarks. I was going to include that in my report, but, uh, yours was very comprehensive, so. I'll just take a moment to acknowledge and amplify and underscore the importance of that effort from the Office of Emergency Management, the Parks Department, and the King County Regional Homelessness Authority. So thank you for highlighting, um, that. So, uh, my report, uh, today, Jacob Thorpe on my staff, uh, uh, is planning on circulating a proclamation honoring former Seattle Congressman Marion Ziancheck. Uh, as we are coming up on the anniversary of Congressman Ziancheck's death, uh, please send any feedback that you have on the draft by Wednesday, uh, so we can circulate a final copy before next Monday's council briefing. For those who, uh, are unaware, Congressman Ziancheck uh, was a, uh, a big, um, labor and progressive leader during the New Deal era, tragically committed suicide in his mid-thirties, uh, right here across the street from Seattle City Hall, the Arctic Club. And was a big leader in the Associated Students of the University of Washington during his higher education years. And for Jacob Thorpe on my staff and myself, Congressman Ziancheck has always been, um, uh, somewhat of an inspiration. So we would like to take this opportunity on the anniversary of his unfortunate, um, uh, death to recognize his achievements via a proclamation, uh, this summer. So that will be circulated for feedback from colleagues. Um, I'm excited to announce that I am going to have my first in-district Town Hall for the Metropolitan Park District Renewal at the Queen Anne Community Center this coming Thursday, which will be from five PM to, uh, originally it was going to be six forty-five. We've, we have been able to revise that to seven PM. So from five PM to seven PM at the Queen Anne Community Center. Uh, just as a reminder, I have announced in briefing previously that I'm planning on holding three in district, uh, community, uh, town halls, uh, specifically to discuss the Metropolitan Park District as we get closer to this fall's uh, decision points to renew, uh, the levy and commit to cycle two investments. So I am looking forward to hearing directly from community members at town halls in the Belltown, Magnolia, and Queen Anne Community Center, uh, communities, um, beginning with the Queen Anne Community Center this coming Thursday from five to seven PM. Uh, you don't have to be in District Seven. I encourage all members of the public who are, uh, interested in learning more about the Metropolitan Park District, um, to please feel free to attend and, uh, hope to see everybody there. A Clean City Initiative for July eleventh to July fifteenth. Clean City reports recovering seven hundred and eighty-five needles and, uh, collecting over twenty-eight thousand pounds of trash from forty-five different pickup locations. Uh, there were no park-focused cleans this week, but we look forward to hearing, uh, in coming weeks the, uh, the latest, um, uh, Focus Park Clean and the new metrics from our partners at Clean City Initiative. Occidental Square, um, Park, for those of you who have been through Occidental Square Park recently, the Occidental Square Park Electrical Box has recently been painted with a mural. The Pioneer Square Residence Council hired the Seattle artist Ryan Henry Ward, better known as Henry, uh, Seattle's most prolific mural artist by any measure, to paint an original whimsical design on the Occidental Square Park Electrical Box. The Pioneer Square Residence Council received support for this project from the Alliance for Pioneer Square, Seattle's Parks and Recreation, and community members. So strongly encourage everyone who hasn't had a chance to get down to Occidental Park to go and check out this new mural. Um, it has been a great gathering place this summer and encourage us to continue while we have good weather to take advantage of our parks and open spaces. Um, this week, uh, as we mentioned earlier, we are expecting extreme, um, heat temperatures as Councilmember Herbold discussed in her update. Uh, I'm not gonna, um, share all the details again. I, as I said, I'll rest on Councilmember Herbold's report, but really appreciate her emphasizing those locations, um, to get out of the, the heat and into, uh, some of our cooling centers that we have identified. And just want to echo that again, um, everyone make sure that, uh, you are doing everything you need to, to engage in, um, self-care, hydration, and keeping cool during this week. The Seattle Office of Arts and Culture and the Seattle Public Library are partnering on an artist panel discussion about changing the narratives around gun violence, and that will be occurring this evening from seven PM to eight thirty PM at the Central Library. The presentation is titled Art, Artists, and the Narratives of Loss and Resiliency. The event will be held at the Seattle Public Library's Central Library with remarks from Mayor Harold, Seattle Office of Arts and Culture Acting Director Royal Hallie Barnes, and Chief Librarian Tom Fay. During the panel, artists will discuss questions ranging from how art helps with resilience, the impact of gun violence on creating art, and how art can collectively help us dream of a new future. The event kicks off a series to address the lived experience and resulting effects of gun violence in our communities, and I appreciate the partnership of Seattle Public Libraries and this programming opportunity. So certainly encourage members of the public to attend, um, if you were free this evening, to go to the Seattle Central Library to participate in that conversation. I'm pivoting now to Councilmember Muskata's notes. Uh, as a member of the, uh, Finance Committee, uh, Councilmember Muskata asked if I would, uh, just briefly relay some of the committee action that we took last week, and, and I'm happy to do that. Um, briefly, uh, please field any additional questions about this item to the Muskata Office. Uh, but we did take action on the following items, and all of these items, uh, as, as I recall, were unanimously recommended by the committee. So first, Council Bill, uh, one two zero three seven one. Uh, a, a Columbia City, um, Property Disposition for Finance Administrative Services. The committee passed, uh, this council bill unanimously recommending, uh, passage at full council. Council Bill one two zero three six seven, uh, Anordinance Accepting a Gift, um, from the Harvard Government Performance Lab, uh, a fellow with the government, Harvard Government Performance Lab. Uh, this item was also unanimously passed, uh, out of the committee with the recommendation of the full council pass, the measure. And Council Bill one two zero three six five and, uh, one two zero three six six. Uh, these are the supplemental budget bills, uh, for the summer to tune up, um, our budget from last fall uh, in the middle of the year. So those are the items from, uh, from the committee. Uh, any follow-up questions on those items? Um, definitely, uh, reach out to the Muskata Office for any clarification in advance of considering those measures on tomorrow's full council agenda. With that, are there any questions or comments on my report? Seeing none, although I thought, Councilmember Strauss, I saw a hand earlier.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Councilmember Lewis, just noting that, uh, the, the wonderful Ballard muralist, Henry is now staking claim in Occidental Square. Would you say that a hundred and fifteen years after Seattle annexed Ballard that Ballard's boundaries are now reaching Occidental Square?
You know, uh, i- i- at least in a cultural sense, gonna, gonna have to say that that's probably the case. Yeah, so I, 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 uh, I, I don't know if, if we can find any great Pioneer Square artists to send them up to Ballard to start painting stuff, but, uh, challenge accepted, Councilmember Strauss.
Wonderful, wonderful.
Thank you.
Well, we're still, we're relying on the water from the city of Seattle and Occidental. So, you know, there's some benefits we get.
Yeah, well, let me, let me just say this. We don't have Larson's Bakery in District Seven, so there's still a lot of things we're trying to aspire to that, uh, that Ballard takes for granted, so.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Seeing none, I will pass it on to, gosh, I think it goes all, uh- Gosh, I think it goes all uh, goes all the way back. To Council President Juarez, or, or have we heard from Councilmember Nelson yet? Cause we have. Councilmembers Morales and Muskata are absent today.
Yeah, she was first.
Okay, yes, so back to Council President Juarez.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewis. Okay, so um, there are no items from the Governance Native Communities and Tribal Governments Committee on tomorrow's council agenda. The next committee meeting is this Thursday, uh, July twenty-eighth at nine thirty AM. On Thursday, we'll have an opportunity to hear from the Department of Neighborhoods regarding the creation of the Indigenous Advisory Council. Uh, secondly, you may have all seen last week that the federal EPA announced it is investing fifty million over the next five years with um, our coastal. Salish Brothers and Sisters Tribes for salmon and shellfish habitat restoration for our state. Former Deputy Mayor Casey Sixkiller is the EPA Regional Administrator for Region Ten, and I want to thank Casey for. Keeping a surprise of this and giving me a call and a heads up about the money that's coming in that the tribes will be using to clean up the Salish Sea. Second on Sound Transit, last week I met with the Sound Transit Board Member Claudia Valducci, who chairs the System Expansion Committee regarding the DEIS. For the West Seattle Ballard Link Light Rail Extension. We discussed potential impacts of the extension on the Chinatown ID area. The vote on the DIES is set for this Thursday's board meeting, which begins at one thirty, July twenty-eighth. Interim CEO Brooke Bellum also reported that the first phase of repair work at the Columbia City Sat- Station. Platform was completed and service disruption was eliminated four days early. The next phase of work on the platform will be August nineteenth to September first and will involve some service disruption. If you'd like more details, please contact Sound Transit or my office. A quick side note, last week, the girders came up for the one thirtieth station up in District Five. Want to thank Abel Pacheco for giving us the information and sending me some pictures and so I think uh, we needed some good news out of D five. Uh, last week, on Friday, I attended the Chief of Police Search Committee meeting along with Councilmember Herbold. Um, as you know, we both serve on the Chief of Police Search Committee and we've been, um, I think, as she shared, we had three or four me, three meetings so far. Um, I will not go through all the dates that Councilmember Herbold shared, um, but I want to add if I, if I repeat, I apologize, Councilwoman Herbold, but I don't know if I heard you say that we also have a meeting. On Saturday, July thirtieth, are the community meetings, that there will be one at the Rainier Beach Community Center. Did you say that? Okay, great. And that's from three to four thirty. And this virtual meeting will include a live feed interpreter lines to welcome participation by immigrant and refugee residents of our city. Thank you, Councilwoman Herbold. Finally, there's also an online survey available to anyone who would like to comment. These meetings are being coordinated by the mayor's office and my office can also provide details if that's helpful to um, the folks listening uh, today. Coming up this week, I'll be meeting with Dr. Crawford again, President of North Seattle College, which is a community pillar in D five. North Seattle College continues to be a great partner, not only in the city's Promise Program and Running SART, but also with our trade unions, Saline and Health Board. Chief Seattle Club regarding apprenticeship and also regarding labor apprenticeship training. Uh, lastly, I think, uh, let's see, yeah, uh, big day, mark the calendar. Seattle Storm has announced its final regular season game, home game. Is Sunday, August seventh against the Las Vegas Aces. This will be veteran superstar Super's final regular season home game. It's expected to be the largest crowd in attendance in Seattle Storm history. The previous record was around seventeen thousand people. Super will be honored in a pre-game ceremony. The game is sold out, so that's going to be exciting. That concludes my report and with that, we, um, I have a script to read here about executive session. Is there any questions or comments after my report? Okay, not seeing any. Let me go ahead and read the instructions for executive session for my colleagues in the viewing public. Um. We will move into the executive session. And again, hearing no business, moving into executive session. As Presiding Officer, I'm announcing that the Seattle City Council will now convene into executive session. The purpose of the executive session is to discuss pending potential or actual litigation. The council's executive session is an opportunity for the council to discuss confidential legal matters. With the city attorneys as authorized by law, a legal monitor from the city attorney's office is always present to ensure. That the council reserves questions of policy for open sessions. I expect the time of the executive session to last uh, fifty minutes and Madam Clerk, you can let us know what time that would be. So if the executive session is to be extended beyond that time, I will announce the extension and the expected duration. At the conclusion of this executive session, the council briefing meeting will automatically be adjourned and the next regularly scheduled council briefing meeting will be. Um, I'm sorry, Tuesday, August first, is that right? August first, Monday, I'm sorry, Monday, August first at two o'clock. So with that, oh, we see I got our guests here. With that, um, are we staying online or we calling in a different number? We're staying online.